Good morning.
Good morning.
And good morning, everybody in the back. We've got Jim Prosser from the COG. And he's going to help us go through some of the work today and also his assistant.
A bear.
A bear. And so they're going to help moderate some of this today. I know we're going to kick it off with the mayor going over a few things. And I'm just going to kind of run through the agenda for the next couple of days. And then Jim Prosser will pick it up from there, going over some of the results from the survey that folks did in the last few days.
And Brenda's going to be a little bit late. She's got a coverage problem for mom, so she'll be joining us as soon as she can get here. So Warren asked me to kick this off, educate a bit. We've got new staff. We've got new board members. We've got outside guests. Sometimes it's easy to look at something and say, hey, what the heck's going on here? And Warren said, put it in the context. And if it's well received, he'll take credit for it. And if you irritate people, it's all on you. So that was the ground rule that he gave me.
Oh, turn it on.
All right. Objectives are really the... It's all about, we're going to either reaffirm or not our vision, mission, values, and how we're going to proceed going forward. We're going to do it in the context of going through our strategic initiatives, where we are with it, identify areas, the policy, goals, development, et cetera, the critical work and work plans, prioritize that, and consensus on how we want to behave. For the benefit of people that aren't aware, Warren asked me to kind of go back through history so we can put history behind this. And this is an interesting... When Warren asked me to put this together, I had no idea how much, how interesting this would be. You go back as far as 2007, and whether you like the person or not, there was a commissioner back there that basically said, we've got a problem with planning for growth. And our current government body's not educated enough and should question whether or not we have the will to get to where we needed to go. Sounds similar to a lot of the complaints that have come up from time to time over the years. That was the first salvo at, we have to do a better job of planning. You move to 2009. Notice, though, across the bottom, I couldn't find any documentation that a plan was put in place, that a higher level set of goals and priorities were put in place. 2009, and actually from 2009 to 2013, a whole bunch of plans were put in place. But what struck me as very interesting, in 2009, the town invested and participated in a comprehensive transportation plan. You can read the words. Six policy areas were identified. It was where we were defining to the region, we were going to be a leader of the region. All the other towns engaged with us. They were looking for our leadership. It was the first time that this TIA ordinance was strongly recommended. Land use management approaches, which we're just getting to in the comprehensive plan, were identified for integrat... Not only local, but regional integration. Seventeen projects were identified to improve the system. As of December 2015, no progress has been made on that. Had a couple of interesting conversations along the way, though. Talked with Bill Dieter from Mayor Weddington three weeks ago. And he basically said, Steve, we've been looking for Waxaw to be a regional leader. The only thing we can ascertain is that you like to have a lot of planning documents. He said, so we had to get on with things. We have to do our things. And you can see what they've gotten done through the CRTPO. Dennis pulled me aside on Friday and made a comment to me that Bob Cook, who runs the CRTPO for the strategy side, was kind of intrigued that the mayor of Waxaw's participated in the CRTPO. They haven't had that. So I called him up Monday and asked him, I said, heard you were talking to Dennis. What'd you mean by that? He says, we just assumed you weren't interested in transportation. Because you haven't been participating either at the mayor level, at the board level. You haven't been pushing us to get your projects through. And part of that, we work with the county, et cetera. So interesting dynamic. When we don't participate or when we go it alone, the perception is we're not interested. 2012, 2013, a very good piece of work was done. The town board conducted a retreat. They created a 15-year vision statement, core values, strategic goals for 2018. And then they got a little bit sideways, in my humble opinion, as a, having in prior life, being an organizational consultant. They identified 26 policy-level board actions as top or high priority. There's no board anywhere that I know can tackle 26. You just can't do that much. Behind that, they identified 80 areas for standards improvements. You can't do that much work. Worse, there was no alignment to budget. They just kept it at administrative level. No ownership to any of the 26 policy-level board actions was assigned. Two board members participated in acting as consultants to the people that were trying to manage all of those 80 tasks. Five actions completed. Form-based code, we know how that well that is working for us, and buyers were worse on that. Small area plans, good thing. Nesbit Park lighting, I don't understand personally, this is just a personal opinion. I don't understand how light poles and light bulbs are a policy-level decision. Funding, it is. And I think that was a great step forward. But the amount of effort, when you go into the document, was very interesting as to where the board was playing on that. And we formed the WEDC, Waxaw Economic Development Corporation, which now we're in the process of trying to figure out what to do with after no action. We're getting some help from Union County. Again, not a criticism, it's just kind of trying to reflect the journey here for everybody. And there we go. 2014. This is where the humor comes in. We conducted a retreat. We were questioned on the vision, some tears flowed. Hey, Brenda.
Yeah.
We had people saying, you can't tell me what to do. Team could not reach... We were struggling with the accountability structure. But as a board, from that, we stepped out and in the fall, we actually took a step through budgeting to identify the cost of implementing a possible vision. We identified the core issues facing the town so we could hire a town manager, get the right person in place as a town manager. Judging still out as to whether or not he's successful or not. The board engaged the town differently by asking for help through the executive consultant that was helping us with the hiring process. How do we engage with the town to define the what? And we got 250 people to participate in that, which was unheard of at the time. Two short weeks using a simple tool through Wendy, Survey Monkey. We didn't do anything extravagant, very easy to do. 2015, we did a whole bunch of work. What's interesting about here, in addition to hiring the town manager, vision, mission, values, et cetera, we developed a budget and aligned to the strategic initiatives. But actually, what's really important, the reason I called that out, as a board, we operated as a board. It wasn't about a particular decision, but over six to eight weeks, we worked as a team to define, as a team with six board members, town manager, staff participated at the leadership level to build... Come on up, Brenda.
I'm good.
To lay out a plan that guides us for the next three years. Budget was developed and aligned to the strategic initiatives. We distributed report cards. We gave high marks with the town manager. And we've got low to average scores. The town board will come back to that. So today, we put all that behind us, for the most part, and we get to answer, are we positioned for the future? Do we keep the shift going? Do we reaffirm our direction or not? Do we pursue the vision or not? Do we continue towards what we thought was, in our words, a world-class town? Couple interesting things to note about the report cards. It's important to note that as we're going through that eight-week process, the staff made the board aware that before we expand anything, we need to address our current gaps. We identified as a mid-to-long-term opportunity, new services our citizens want and are willing to pay for. And we were asked by staff through Warren, get that off there. There's enough gaps to get under control in the first seven. Don't try to take on new services. That was a pretty big step because I think there's always a, at least from a political side, we always want to add new services, try to please more people. But we were being told something very, very specific. Don't go there yet. I think we're going to hear more about that later today. Warren was as polite as he could when he did his 100-day review, but it got down to, keep moving forward and accept your form of government. There is a big distinction, and the distinction's crucial. Leaders, the board, the people do the right things through guidance, influencing, direction. I think we're all getting our arms around that in a very good way. I know Fred, Brenda, Jim, myself, and Warren were experiencing some of that elevation through the emerging issues forum the last couple of days. And it's up to Warren to do the things right, bring them forward, to accomplish, to have charge of the responsibility, and we hold them accountable. Together, it's a healthy organization. And it's important to note, to ground us, that those that are wanting to invest in Waxaw are looking for our vision. And this one is like a, kind of a knife in the gut, if you will. In the fall of 2015, during the comprehensive plan, there was a guy sitting in the back of the room who was a business consultant, hadn't identified himself. I went over, asked him who he was, asked him if he would come and talk to Warren or not. And would you tell us what it's like to do business in Waxaw? He had been doing some development in Marvin, Charlotte, et cetera. He basically said, listen, I can't afford to build in Waxaw yet. Your vision isn't clear to the outside. You may think it is, but it's not. You don't have a brand. I'll give you, I'll call it unclear. Your processes are unclear. Your range is not strong yet, your range to the outside community. I could go close by to Marvin, pay more initially, spend half the time with more certainty, and be generating return while reaching the very demographic you offer. Says, that's your competition. I can do it in Lancaster for cheaper. And he was using the example of Prescott Commercial. Said, there's no way I would ever touch that. Within a mile radius, it'd be easier to go anywhere else outside the Waxaw town limit rather than try to work with the current owner, work with your condition and use plan, work with the planning staff to not know what I would get at the end after a year. February 2016, Groundhog's Day, Warren and I went up to the economic... We were invited by the county to go up to the Economic Development 16th Annual Groundhog's Day. Let's see if we see our shadow, I guess, is what, what are they prognosticating? Guy that does site selection, very successful. He basically had a very targeted message to municipalities. Companies and CEOs aren't asking you for a vision. They assume you have it, and it's populated everywhere in your communication. And if I don't see it, you're off the list. We assume you're already working on it. If I can't see it, if it's not branded, if you don't convey it, if you're not in the game. I want to hear from your mayor, your officials, whomever, about the efforts underway. I want to see the energy, the enthusiasm. Make me want your town, your city. But I'm not going to come looking for you if I can't find it in what you portray to the world on a day-in, day-out basis. And then 2016, this was an outsider, I'm being very blunt here. This was from the UDO session on Thursday night. I purposely didn't go. I had people texting me. But one person in particular, who was from the outside, who actually looks at things from an economic perspective, said, that was scary. People are so stuck in their little pocket, don't care about, or cannot see anything beyond two feet in front of them. Seeing it on full display with leadership participating, that wasn't an indictment on leadership, but leadership there, said, it was scary. Just a very matter of fact, that is completely unedited, that came back. That's how it was interpreted to someone who might bring people to invest in the town. And it's important to note, coming from that as well and from other things, that there is a gap between professional and political skills and learning, et cetera. What was interesting about this is that gap continues to widen. But when, I think it was John and I were having a discussion about this in a different vein. He asked me the question, why do we keep going back to the same people if we know that they don't have, if there's a gap there? Why aren't we searching more for? And I don't want to paraphrase, but we were kind of having the discussion about, if we know there's a gap, are we asking the right people? Which is a good, good, fair discussion. If we know that, then what we're trying to get out of the next couple of days, what do we need to know in order to give direction to staff? And what does staff through Warren need to specify to the board in order to receive direction from them? And that's, it's an oversimplification of the next couple of days. But in essence, it's really going to get down to, what does it mean to be a world-class town? A world-class town, what are we willing to invest to do so? I did one of those goofy experiments. I went out and asked 10 people two questions. You for a $0.10 tax increase? Hell, no. I just kind of like got slapped around. Would you pay $0.10 if I could guarantee you in 10 years you'd have a world-class town? Heck, yes. Where do I pay? Then again, of course, they probably argued with that once the $0.10 came through, but we all, but it's a different, there's a different expectation. On the way over here to get my diet coke, I stopped at feel-good. A question from behind the cash register. Are you guys, you six, raising a ruckus yet? We want change. Totally unsolicited, I said, I'd like a lot of titty. They guaranteed no way to get there. Different. So really, what we're going to be doing is going through these six things in a different way. Warren sent those out. Those are the words behind them, and do we mean them? But if you look at them, I think it's a fair question. How well are we positioned for the future? Take the first one. Can we afford the maintenance of our current, can we, current environment? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Financial performance. Do we know the tax and debt needed to support our initiatives? We're going to get to a capital improvement plan? Is that positioned for the future? We get to do that over the next couple of days? Have we defined under operational excellence what really customer service is? What will take to the next level? We're going to see an HR policy? Do we really measure, if you look at, are we really tracking the report card? I had an interesting experiment I conducted that I'll, we'll talk throughout the day with Kathy in terms of just getting the report card and wondering what it really means. You know, we could go through all these. Current core infrastructure, assessment of the current state, traffic congestion, ongoing procedures, et cetera. But that's kind of, in the grand scheme of things, that's the past to the present. And this is what we get to either reaffirm or not. How do we want to go forward or not? What are we willing to invest in or not? So that's, the past is behind us as of the end of the slideshow. So now we're going to look forward.
Okay. Any questions, comments so far? There's going to be before it's over, I'm sure.
Excellent job, Mike.
Thank you. Natalie, in the spirit of looking forward and not behind, Natalie's great for these little phrases she comes with. Must learn them in the Air Force or something. There's a reason your front windshield is bigger than your rear windshield because you should be looking forward, and it's more important what's in front of you than what's behind you. So we are going to be looking forward the next two days. However, having said that, it was interesting, I pulled this, this was the retreat that the board did, or the workshop that the board did in 2012. When we put the agenda together, and I had not looked at this, but if you look at the topics that were covered in 2012, talking about Groundhog Day, it was, they are almost identical four years later, what we're going to be talking about in the next couple of days. With one major exception, that Dennis is really going to hit on, which has to do with the towns or the infrastructure that's being installed and how critical it is we get that right. So the issues haven't changed. Many haven't been addressed. But the issues haven't changed. They're the same. And what will happen is, the longer we go through time without addressing the issues, the price tag on fixing those is going to continue to increase. So that's something we need to think about. So the, just came up with a, just a little board theme, Town of Waxaw, Built to Last. And that's, we are built to last in some areas, and we're not built to last in others. And, but that'll be what we aspire to. And I know Dennis is going to hit on that pretty hard in the afternoon, and he's going to, what he is going to go over is the most important topic we will cover in the next two days. We're going to get into board manager relationships and how the culture, the way the culture needs to be established as far as what your vision is and how we set ourselves up to achieve what we need to tackle. But the infrastructure side of the house, what you're going to hear this afternoon is going to be absolutely critical to the tackles. If we don't get that right, nothing else that we talk about is going bad. And I can't overemphasize that enough. And you're going to see that this afternoon. Could you pull up the, is it Agenda? Yeah, here we go. Okay. So we need a number of issues to be, we need direction on a number of different things. This is going to set the tone for the coming year, as well as a plan to a large degree for the next five years. So having a conversation about a lot of these different topics that we have got to get direction on is vital. How do I get the, how can you click on the first attachment? I want to go over specifically what we're going to need direction on.
First one, policy.
Yeah, right there. The, we need to, we take, the staff takes your vision, mission, values very seriously. Give an example, one of the things, one of your values is teamwork. That's why I've got staff in here. We approach things as a team. Obviously, the board has the final decision on policy-related matters. But I think having the folks in the room that do this every day is important. And having them here to hear the conversation and to hear the board's opinion on certain things is extremely important. So the overall message there is, your vision, mission, values, and strategic priorities, those aren't just words on a piece of paper to us. Those mean something, and they have to mean something to you. If we talk about, we want to be a creative and innovative organization. Well, if we want to be creative and innovative, you know, we have to have a free exchange of conversation without fear of reprisal or retribution. I mean, those sorts of things mean something. Because when I, when we go out and hire staff and add new staff and go recruit for these positions, I'm telling them that I'm bringing them into a certain type of organization that values certain sorts of things. And if that's not true, I'm telling them, lie. And I'm bringing people down here that are going to be expecting one thing and seeing something else. So that's why the vision, and whatever the vision, mission, and your values are, whatever they are, they need to really truly reflect who you are, what you think, and what the board agrees on. Because again, from that perspective, they just aren't words on a piece of paper. They really do mean something, and that's the way we operate. And I can't, so we're going to, we're going to go through reaffirming and talking about those things. The board commissioner, management protocols, how are we going to operate together? You know, there's very specific things at a policy level that the board's responsible for, and then staff is responsible for carrying those things out. So you're the what, and staff is the how. And we're going to talk about how we operate in that way and what that means. Organizational capacity building. We need to understand that there's a, there's a difference between new service creation, which is what Dennis is going to, is going to talk about, versus scaling existing services. Perfect example. So chief, you know, the police department's a squared-away department. We're in good shape there, no issues. They got, they got good people, they got good resources, they have a great facility, good training. So for...
That doesn't mean you're not watching them.
No, we're always watching them.
We're always watching them.
So for him, so the chief will come far, well, the town is growing, need to add more patrol. I'm just going to give a simple example. Add more patrol officers. Well, he already, he already has his organization, his system set up. He's just plugging in new people to that system. He's just plugging in. So what Dennis is going to talk about is creating something new from scratch that we don't have, which is a complete, it's not a matter of plugging people into an existing system. It's a matter of developing a new policies, practices, procedures, and a program, and then having the people come onboard to administer that program. That's a completely different endeavor. And that's where we are on a fundamental basis, particularly in the infrastructure development side of the house. And he's going to, he's going to hit hard on that. So this stuff, this is the most complicated, the easy thing, and it's not easy, but the easy thing is to add police officers to patrol, as an example. Because you know, you're buying, you're hiring new people, buying new cars, and plugging them into any system that's already existing. New service creation is, again, a completely different animal that requires a whole lot more time, energy, the resources, and patience.
I was sharing, I was sharing with Warren last week, the experience in how it took the IBM company three years to come to the realization that that was different. And we all take cloud computing for granted. I was smack dab in the middle of it. The company could not figure out what that new service was. And it cost several thousands of jobs as a result. It was much easier for them to try to figure out how to scale something else than it was to adapt to. This is something that the market, in our case, it's the citizens really needed, or the, you know, the people we support really needed. And it is hard. And it took us three years to get our heads wrapped around how hard that was.
So going from, going from medium to large is easy because medium's already set up, you're just scaling. Going from basically nothing to smaller, medium is a completely different challenge. And that's, that's where we are in a number of, a number of different areas. And so what has happened is, we are very reactive in a number of different areas. Had a phone call yesterday complaining about the store venture site, the, you know, what's the town doing about stormwater? Sedimentation, erosion control, all those things. Well, we're playing from behind. That's what we're doing. Well, we're, it's the state's responsibility. So we, we need to create an environment and organization where we're getting ahead of things. We have started to do that. One of the things that was absolutely critical was the transportation impact analysis ordinance that we brought forward. We were just, we were getting bludgeoned to death by the private sector on, they were gaming the system, having transportation impact analysis done on their project. And obviously, it was skewed that would require them to do the least amount of work as possible. Well, we had flipped that on its head. And now we're saying, okay, with your TIA, you're going to choose a firm that we pick, and you're going to pay for it. Because we're going to have our interests looked at, looked after first, not the developers. So that was just an example of something that was absolutely critical when we had to get in place. And there are a number of different things that Dennis is going to talk about along those lines. Then we're going to get into, well, again, with the infrastructure acceptance and the infrastructure stewardship program that we need to put in place. And this relates to your strategic initiative of your core infrastructure, new standards, new programs, new staff. We, just to be blunt about it, whether we have been, whether we're aware of this or not, we have been putting things on layaway. It's either pay me now, or pay me a whole lot later. And we have chosen the pay me a whole lot later approach because we don't have some very fundamental programs in place that are protecting our interests down the road.
So do you think that, that approach, the pay me later, is a product that pays you go? Because if, if we go back to the old theory of stuffing money in the mattress until we can afford something, we end up with subprime because we saved up just enough to get whatever we need, and it lasts us a couple of years, versus we say, we've got bank financing, we've got bond references, we've got other ways of doing it, but you, we still have pay-as-you-go up there. To me, that just says, well, we'll just keep stuffing money in the mattress.
Well, and one of the things you're going to hear is that we are going to, in some form or fashion, we are going to have to put money aside to go back and fix things that are already in the ground. However we do it, if it's, if it's pay-as-you-go, if it's bank financing, and that's, that's not talking about the new things you're talking about doing. that's, that's not talking about the new things you're talking about doing, new town hall, new public services facility, greenways, sidewalks, those sorts of things. This is just the, these are things that we're going to take, hopefully we're going to have time to take a tour and get you out in the field and you can see firsthand some of the things that we're talking about. Go ahead.
I think what you're getting at though is, to kind of bridge the gap, he's referring to things weren't even identified to stuff money in the mattress.
They weren't.
Right. And that's, that's the bigger, the bigger issue here, that we weren't stuffing under money in the mattress.
Yeah. So the hundred, like the cog did great work on the true budgeting, all the capital that was identified, a hundred and fifty million dollars. Well, at the time that that work was done, there, there are things out there that we're going to have to go back and address that are already included in that hundred and fifty million.
Well, a hundred and fifty million was a Christmas serious backlog wish list.
Yeah, I know. So that gives you, that gives you a starting point. Okay, globally, here are all the things on the list. And Dennis, a matter of prioritization, what do you want to fund? What are your priorities? So, and we're going to get into that because I've whelled it down to kind of a bare bones twenty million dollar list that we're going to get into tomorrow.
But think about it, Christmas wish list and there were things not on it.
Yeah. But the twenty million doesn't include infrastructure that was, that was put in the ground that we're going to have to address. I'll give you a simple example. So we're, we at some point in time and maybe even currently have allowed people to plant trees in the planting strip and not, which is a bad idea. Not only are we allowing people to plant trees in the planting strip and approving the plans for that, we're allowing them to plant the worst kind of trees you could possibly plant in the planting strip. The American elm, maple and willows. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these trees. What's going to happen is as the root system matures and those trees mature, you're going to see the sidewalks start to buckle, you're going to see the curb and gutter start to buckle, you're going to see the roads start, we're already seeing it. We've seen it and I got into a discussion with someone in Kurutin. So that's an example of, okay, are we going to, are we going to make a policy decision that, well, we're just going to, we're going to one off, we're going to deal with these things one as a time, one at a time. As the sidewalk starts to buckle, we're just going to go in and fix it. Or are we going to globally say, okay, we're going to, we're going to have to go back and take all these trees out and put something new in or do something different? I mean, that's not, that's not going to be a fun conversation to have because some of these trees are, are maturing trees. I mean, that, that's a simple example. And that, that, that by itself will be hundreds of thousands of dollars if you just take the tree. I mean, we're going to be, we're going to be in good shape as far as firewood goes for years to come, but, but it's going to be a, it's going to be a major decision on how you're going to deal with that.
Make a plan.
That's a simple example. Because the standards weren't in place, the proper programs weren't in place to say, you know what, it's not a good idea that we're allowing this to happen. And I'm a, I don't want to hit on that one too much, but Todd can tell you about the storm pipe that's being cambered. We're going to see some pictures of how that's being installed without proper oversight and the implications that that's going to have.
We've got one in the Oaks right now, thirty thousand dollars just to fix it and it's ours.
A storm, storm pipe.
Nineteen years ago. It was put in the ground nineteen years ago.
So those are, so that's, those sorts of things aren't on the hundred and fifty million dollars dollar list. So that's, those are big policy level decisions and those aren't going to be easy decisions to make, but they're, they're going to have to be made. So, so you're going to hear, you're going to hear two things. You're going to, you're going to hear, okay, we're going to have to go back and fix a number of things that are out there now. We're going to have to put a program in place, which is going to require money and staff, new policies, new programs moving forward where we don't have that happen again. So we're, we're, we're going to be operating in, in two worlds for, for time until we get this squared away. We're getting there and Dennis has made great, great headway and he's going to, I feel good about where we're going to get that fixed. It's concerning the degree to which we're going to have to go back and spend resources on things that should have been done right the first time. And there's no nice way of saying no other than just putting it out there like that. Yeah, then you get into, we're going to talk about the capital side, some of which is going back and fixing some of what's already in the ground. Some of it is new, town hall, public services facility, you know, what's your vision with sidewalks, greenways, you know, street lighting downtown and other, other areas. So we've got a list of potential capital projects that we'll go over and talk about those things. And then how do you want to pay for? You know, the easy thing is to say, well, yeah, I want to do this, this, this and this. Well, it's going to cost this much and what are your, and here are your financing options and funding options on how to, how to make this thing happen. And again, those are some of the capital things that I've been hearing about. You know, we are going to reach a point, we're going to have to do something with town hall. We all know about public services, you know, the downtown park. What are the, what are your, and I've thrown together a five-year CIP just as a starting point for discussion, not saying this is what we need to do necessarily, but just, this is where we need to start in terms of having a conversation about, you know, is what, what's a good dollar amount for some of these processes? What year would you like to see this happen? And I've equated everything back to pennies on the tax rate. Not that I'm recommending raising the property tax rate, but the property tax rate is the one source of revenue that you have 100% control over of any meaningful, you know, magnitude. The property tax rate's it. So I've equated things back to pennies on the tax rate in terms, just to give you an idea of what that looks like. Does that make sense? I'm not recommending per se property tax rate, that's a complete board policy level decision, but I do, I do put it in context that this, this is how much it's going to, this is what it equates to a property tax rate. And then we're going to get into setting the board commissioner legislative priorities and strategies. And this also relates to, and the mayor hit on it, do you want to be a regional leader? Do you want to be a leader in Western Union County? I mean, we're the one, we're the largest jurisdiction in Western Union County, the largest in terms of population, staff size, budget, all of that. So do you want to be, do you want to be a leader? What does that mean? Or do you just want to engage other jurisdictions when it, when it's convenient for us? And what is your strategy or your philosophy related to regionalism? And then how are we going to, on top of that, how are we going to engage our state representatives, particularly with our transportation needs that we have that are being unmet? What's a good strategy for, for engaging them and getting anybody's attention to getting some help in some of the transportation infrastructure that the state is responsible for? And then we're going to get, we're going to swing all the way back around to our vision, mission, values. So after having gone through all this, for the coming year with your vision, mission values, does, is what is currently in place still hold true or does it need to be changed to, to reflect where we're going to be heading in the next year, really the next five years? So we'll tackle, we'll get on that again. Some things we probably won't get to because as, as time's not going to, we'll have to address these in other, other ways, workshops, communication policy, social media policy, code enforcement. That's another one where we play from behind all the time. We don't have, in order to do code enforcement right, we're going to have to have a new code enforcement ordinance as well as a dedicated staff, a really big proactive about that. Economic development, the town, the town real estate, some of what you're going to see in the five-year capital conversation is going to relate to the town real estate. So we really need to talk about the, the capital side of the house before we can have a real clear conversation about town real estate, if that makes sense. We'll get into some of that, but it's almost, we need to talk about the capital side before we get into the town real estate because some of those things will, boards and committees, we're not really going to update you on the comp plan, the UDO rewrite, although those things will definitely come up. And we're not going to get into the nitty gritty operational departmental niche for the upcoming year or minor capital stuff. Although the work on developing the upcoming year's budget has started with staff and will affect that future, I won't be able to run all that. So that's, that's what we're going to tackle the next, the next two days. Any, are we in agreement with those or things we need to talk about? I mean, is that, we're missing anything? And as we go through, if something comes up, and this needs to be a conversation, this is, this doesn't need to be me or Jim Prosser or somebody standing up just preaching to you all. We need to, we're going to have to get real direction and some decision on some things. And again, if, if we don't get decision, final decisions, we absolutely have to get direction for the next steps on some of these items. Does that make sense? Am I missing anything?
Warren, I think in the last 12 months and now, this is the first time any one, any group, any board has applied sort of an organized, thinking approach to the issues that we face. And my only question is why did it take so long? So let's hurry up and, you know, we need to-
Well, then we did a hundred day assessment, I did a hundred day assessment of the, of what I saw in the town in August and this is about 300 days in. So now, you know, we've, we've done the analysis, we've done, you know, the, we've done the diagnosis and now here's the, here's the cure or here are the next steps moving forward. And that's, that's where you all come in.
So I'm going to say something in response to what Brett said. Mike Stewart always reminded us, reminded the candidates, until you sat in the position, don't assume something could have been done differently. And so I don't want to go back and revisit the past. I, I think Mike's advice is very good. We don't know everything that they were facing at that point in time. We went through it based on some different things at different times as well and you're going to be a part of it now, so.
It, it just, looking back, in, in defense of the last couple of years, you know, whatever was going on with the manager and the board in the last probably year of his tenure here and then Greg Mahor coming, I'm just going to throw it out there, then Greg coming in for a year and just basically trying to hold things together. I mean, that's a difficult, that's a difficult environment to get anything though. I mean, I know there was a lot of frustration with the board and staff and the community, but now we've transitioned out.
We're, we're a different topic.
Yeah, absolutely. So now it's time to, we're going to put all our cards on the table and this was 2012 when this was done, we're 2016 and hopefully we won't have new faces in 2020 sitting here saying, why haven't we? So, so it, we've reached a decision point time on a lot of this.
Nothing else, so Brandy will give us a new cover scheme.
They did a, this was really, this was really good what they did and I'll share it with anybody that wants to see, but they, they did a, they knocked it out of the park and turned, turns a team up to issues, but there was, but what happened was again with that two years of kind of in the, in the wilderness so to speak, it was just not a good environment to get a whole lot done. And that wasn't anybody's fault, that was just a transition away and, but anyway, so I'll leave that. So Jim, he had done, I think folks had received a, a survey that you completed and Jim had the, he's got the results of those and I'm going to turn it over to him to kind of talk about what that revealed.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Warren, my, my role here, our role here is going to be pretty focused. What, what we want to be able to accomplish is address what we've heard from you. And the results that we're going to deliver is really taking what we heard and solving two basic problems that have already been identified or opportunities. First of all, the mayor started with a recitation of really what are some of the, some of the basic challenges in terms of what I would call just getting results in areas of importance and areas that you identify important. That's what I heard you say. Does that affirm something? That there's a strong appetite to get results in areas that are important to the board? And then secondly, Warren talked about how to, how to get that done through systems and staff, but also how do you prioritize? So those are the two areas that we want to cover. We're going to be here just through the morning. And I understand, Warren, you're, we're going to be given a little elbow in terms of the agenda to do that. So with that in mind, what we, what we really need to do is give you an opportunity to talk a little bit more so that we make sure that the systems, and we're going to talk about those systems, that will help you get results in areas that are important to you. And, and also how to make sure that those areas that are important to you really rise to the top. But I've just a couple of brief thoughts and then Catherine can actually provide some of the feedback, summarize some of the takeaways. We provided some information in that area. So just, again, we talked about, we talked about, we want to get, we want to get results in priority areas, right? Now, in order to do that, organizations that are, that are effective, organizations that are very effective really are characterized by their ability to manage their time, manage time and resources. Yeah, well, I'm sorry, man, time and risk effectively, right? That's what we want to do. We want to be able to manage your time and staff time and risk effectively. So let's just take a moment to explore that. There's, there's two different types, or two different ways to think about time. It's elapsed time and the mayor went through that, going through, through your past history and what's happened or didn't happen in that elapsed time. And then there's just the time that you have available. You're all a hardworking group and it's pretty obvious. I just watched that from the meetings we participated in the past. You put in a lot of time, but there's a finite amount of your time and there's a finite amount of staff. And the sooner that you come to grips with, a big part of your job, a big part of your job is to make sure that you're spending on times, that you're spending your time on things that are important that will make, that'll help you get results in your priority areas. That's what you have to focus in on. And you've got limited amount of staff time, they've got finite amount of time, you've got a finite number of people here. And if they're not working in areas that will make a difference, that'll get you those results. If they're working on, if you've got them working or they're working on areas that aren't the high priorities, then you're not going to get the results that you want. This isn't that complicated. It's basically that. What are the risks? Well, you've already talked about those risks. We're going to talk a little bit more about it and ask you to talk about it. But there, there's a lot of different types of risks. There's the risks of decisions like allowing trees to be planted in boulevards that aren't the right type of trees or allowing them at all. The risk of that impacting infrastructure. There's the risk that you have, and we talked about this in the key financial strategies, the risk when contractors are installing streets and utilities and you don't have somebody really watching it pretty much full-time and the risk that they're not installed properly and that you have to go back and, and undertake repairs sooner than, than later than you, than you normally should have. There's risk that you're, that you're not achieving the type of, the type of community, that type of quality of life in your community that you want for your children and grandchildren. That, that risk is very important and you need to address that. There's financial risk and we've talked about that. That's a big part of the key financial strategies was looking at that financial risk of not really being in a position to pay to maintain both the services and the systems 10 years from now. That's like buying a house and not doing any maintenance on it for 30 years and then realizing that you've got to replace all of the systems that once you had and saved enough money to do that. So this isn't that, it isn't that complicated, but understanding those risks is really key. And, and if you have that context, if you realize that what you need to accomplish today and nothing else is figure out where we're going to, where are, is your time best spent over the next year? Your time, your limited time, where do you want to be focusing on? And, and what are those big risks that you have out there or opportunities that, that you want to focus in on with limited time? So that's, that's important. If you don't leave here with that, then you're, you're simply not going to be able to make the type of progress you want. So the third concept that I want to just briefly review is just that success is in the margins. You can, you can really do a good job 90% of the time, but you, but if you don't- You can, you can really do a good job 90% of the time, but you, but if you don't, if you don't really get that last 10% done, if you really don't finish the job, you're not gonna get the results. So you, you, you see this all the time, and, and I think that's what I saw earlier on when we worked on the financial plan, and I've heard it again today. You, you started a lot of good things, but they didn't get finished. You didn't get the results. So what, what does it take to, to really get that last mile, that last 10%, that last piece done? What does it really, what does it really take? Because that's gonna make a difference. The other is a sense of urgency. And, and I heard this clearly today, is that fair to say, a sense of urgency, that, that you really want to be able to move with a sense of urgency? You know, a sense of urgency is not panic, it is not air and fire, it is just the opposite. It is about understanding that you've got, you're, you're in a, you're in a marathon here, but you, you've got to begin to take the right steps, so that first things become first, and you're able to accomplish those important items. That's moving with a sense of urgency. It's understanding that you know how to prioritize, and you know how to get the results that you need. Now, you, you've also talked about your vision, your, your, your vision, your mission, and then your values, right? So let me, let me just have you think about this. The vision is really, what is that long-term aspiration for your community, right? It's not something that should be a year from now, it should be 20 years from now. And you should, you should always be looking at, at that in the longer term. Your, your mission statement is really a description of how, how you're gonna do that. And the, the values are really a lot, how, what's your relationship with the, with the community, with your residents, with each other, and with the staff, right? So those are your values. That builds, that describes your, that describes your relationship. So in, in order to achieve the vision, you need to have goals, right? And in order to achieve those goals, you need strategies. And in order to get the, the strategies accomplished, you need the resources. So what, what you're talking about today, and what is gonna be really important, is that on a regular basis, at least once a year, you wanna, you wanna say, is this the right vision for our community? Is this still the right vision? And, and I really wouldn't suggest that you tweak that a lot, but if, if there's a need to, you visit it, and you're comfortable, you're on, on target with it, you move on to do it. This is what's really important, this is what I hear you doing today and tomorrow. What are, what are the goals, what are the most important goals that we need as a board, as elected officials, to direct staff in order to achieve this vision for the next year? And you may have it a little longer, you may say over the next two or three years, understanding that some of the goals are meant to be longer, but what are those top goals? And, and if you leave here with any more, any more than three to five, and I'd really encourage you to have closer to three than five goals, that you're primarily gonna focus in on, you're, you're not gonna succeed. I think you all know, I, I've done this work, my background is that I was in three different cities, a city manager for over 20 years, and a couple of those, even a larger one, was a startup community. So $125,000 per city manager, they had no systems really in place to, just like you're talking about here. But I've also consulted as a, as a financial consultant, I consulted with, and now that, God, we do this work for other communities. So well over 100 communities. Communities that get things done start with a limited number of goals. They're, they're, and they also are very disciplined, and we'll talk about that, very disciplined about accomplishing those goals. So they look at three to five goals, then what are the strategies that, that we need to achieve those goals? And you should be visiting that, there should be a feedback group, are these the right goals to achieve this vision? Are these the right strategies to achieve that goal? And are we providing the right resources?
So just, so we are using the same language. We, we created a vision.
Yeah.
Instead of using the term goals, we call them strategic initiatives.
Same thing.
Okay. Just, and then the strategies were the goals and objectives that you and the staff put together.
Right.
I just wanna make sure we're all talking the same thing.
Glad you did that.
And to give you an example, the reason, we, we whittled down the initial step, and you, you hit on this, we, we talked about all the, our strategies for the coming year, strategic initiatives, but then we took out doing anything new, because we had so much work to do, and now what we're finding is that we're really only gonna be able to focus on.
The givens.
Yeah, yeah.
We call it the givens.
Yeah, three or four of these, that, you know, there were some, there were, some of the stuff related to engaging the community. You know, we're not really at a point to be engaging the community in the way it needs to be done, because we have so much more fundamental stuff to tackle before we can even get to that sort of, you know.
Well, the, you know, I'll third, throw the big elephant, and we really can't do economic development.
Yeah, that's the other.
To get some of this other stuff done.
We were trying to, we're taking advantage of economic development opportunities as they present themselves.
Right.
But we are not actively, we don't have an active economic development strategy or program.
So you're already doing this, you're looking at time and money.
See, he, he is getting right perfectly, that's exactly what we're seeing.
So what, what this is about, and, and we'll talk a little bit about communications, because I, we saw this in the feedback, is there, it's important for you to be revisiting, revisiting the, this feedback group, whoops. Specifically, are you, are you dedicating the right time, do you have the right, the amount of time and money, and other resources? Sometimes it's your expertise and your staff, your, your time. But do we have the right resources to, to accomplish these strategies, or these right strategies for the goals? And this will change during the year. It's another mistake organizations make, they're not disciplined enough to go back and talk about this on a regular basis. Our recommendation is that you absolutely design your agendas, so that at least once a month, you're spending at least a half an hour, not on every strategy, probably just on one of these per time, one of your top strategies. But if you're not doing that, you're doing what's urgent, but not necessarily the most important, and what's happening is, and it's, it's nobody's fault, which means it's everybody's fault, what's happening is, again, you're elected because people trust your judgment, right? They trust your judgment to guide this, this community. And, and this is, this community is a big multimillion dollar business. It's a complex, very complex business. If you had to set up a business to run a city, it would be one of the most complex businesses around I can think about. And your timeframe isn't a quarter-to-quarter or annual report type. Your timeframe is, is that, but it's also, you've gotta make sure this is a good community 20 years from now. That's part of your responsibility, right? So that timeframe is really important. You need to be spending time, investing time at least once a month, looking at these long-term goals, and making sure that you're addressing that. And my guess is, and this is the third, third community we're visiting this, this year, this calendar year, and they're all struggling with the same issue, it is so hard to keep, to do what you need to do just to keep the lights on, to do the ministerial duties, to take care of those routine items, and you spend so much time on those, you're not spending it up here, you're spending it down here in the defense. So we're gonna talk about some of those systems. But first, what I want to do is ask Catherine to give you some takeaways from the surveys that we saw, and then, then we want to have you talk a little bit more about that before we get into the system discussion, so.
So far, go ahead.
To your point that we just said that on that, though, so vision is listed first, to me it seems more sense that mission would be listed first, because that's a continuance, that doesn't matter who's up here on this board, the work plan, the job is there. For instance, we have, we usually, the police department. Policing is policing. We hired the chief to bring his vision to how to do it, but it's still, the mission is policing, one way or the other.
And I won't, I won't argue with that. And I don't mean to replace one with the other, some, depending on how you've defined it and how you work within your community, that, that mission and vision are, I think, are very, very important together.
Correct.
And, and both of those could, could be refined. I just use this because we typically will talk about that, a lot of communities will do a vision without a mission, and usually not the other way around. But I wouldn't argue with you, John, I think you're, you're dead on, especially the way you frame it up. But I, I forgot, are there any other questions on what I've talked about here before I took over at Cal? Any questions, concerns, pushback? Brandy, we didn't get a chance to say hello. All right.
Hold it in. The, you hit, you hit on focus. I mean, some time management or re, discipline, I, I call it focus, but it's the same, that is, that is imperative for staff to work in an environment where they are focused, or able to be focused on, because we're the, we're the how, we are the doers, they're, the board is the what. And if we don't have the discipline and the focus, and if we don't have the right people on board, we're gonna, we're not gonna be successful.
And that's part of your resources. Resources is, is time, but it's also the right people.
Which, when you start talking about the people you're bringing on board, it needs to be people that are aligned, or can, or that can work under the environment that you say you wanna establish your values. And all this, all this stuff plays together. It's not, one of these, one piece of the puzzle here cannot stand independently of the other. It, it is all interwoven.
Yeah. And, and there's a, there's a fair amount of developing muscle memory that goes on to this. And again, in those communities, and you can probably see that even in your community but others, there's muscle memory that develops. And so what I mean by that is there are practices that you get into place, that if you're disciplined about those practices, and we'll talk about some of those later on, if you're, if you're very disciplined about that, it'll, you'll be able to do things faster, and be able to move more quickly. But what this is all about now is developing that muscle memory, is developing those practices, those habits. Because this can all seem really way overwhelming. I mean, there's just a lot to do in the city, and there's just a lot. And, and for a variety of reasons, smaller communities, and Warren's mentioned this before, smaller communities typically, you're expected to get the same results in larger cities. Really, people are expecting you to do the same thing and deliver pretty much the same results in most areas that the city is, maybe Charlotte, but you don't have the resource, you don't have the staff expertise, and so it is much harder. I've managed bigger cities and small cities, smaller cities are a lot tougher, because you don't have the systems in place, you haven't developed that muscle memory, you just don't have the resources, but you still gotta get that done, and it's just a lot more difficult. And so challenges of small cities are really well, well underplayed, but there are ways to overcome it.
And the other thing on, on the challenges, it gets to the, the regional aspect. You, Charlotte equals, for all intents and purposes, equals Mecklenburg County when it comes to the school system. We're an afterthought to the school system in this county. I mean, they do their own thing, and we, we fit into that. And how do we play in that game? I mean, it's, it's a whole, how do we get them to realize, for instance, that crossing guards might be a good thing, and, you know, that kind of stuff, it's, we're part of them, we're part of them.
The board of commissioners are an afterthought to the school board. I mean, I don't know if we can outdo the board of commissioners.
I would venture to say, given some of the things I've seen, sometimes we're an afterthought to the board of commissioners in the county, as a community, if I'm being perfectly blunt. So, I mean, to the point, though, John, it, it is that whole thing where we have, how do we, the difficulty of that, the complexity of how do we participate, I don't, that's not a blame on the county commissioners, that is that, are we up there fighting for it? Are we arguing with them, talking, debating, deliberating, all that kind of stuff, very infrequently? And that, which, back to your point about time.
Where are you gonna put your time?
Yeah, exactly.
And again, what are the risks?
Yeah.
And I'll tell you right now, again, given where you are at, if you wanna influence others, the first thing you gotta do is be able to influence yourself, in terms of influencing the direction of the community. Because if you do that, that's what, you heard those comments early on, that's what that was a lot about today. They need to, people need to see that you're influencing, and by that, I mean, you're getting results in the area, in priority areas. If you're getting results in priority areas, people will pay attention to you. Your residents will, your staff will, county commissioners and others will. They'll see that, and, and from an economic development standpoint, they'll see that you're just admitting results in areas that are important. If they know you can do that, you'll be able to influence. Until you're able to demonstrate that on a consistent basis, it's gonna be very difficult.
Can I put you on the spot for one thing? So, obviously, working in the Charlotte metro area, who, and just, just to make the point that we're not alone in this challenge, I mean, other municipalities, this is a growing area, other folks are seeing the same sort of, or having the same sort of challenges. I mean, where are you, where else are you seeing similar sorts of issues being dealt with that we're having to?
Well, we just, I mean, we just met with, and it's different types of work in Troutman and Belmont, just very recently, but I can tell you, talking managers, and we meet with managers and mayors on a regular basis, and I don't know if I can tell you that anybody is saying that this is easy stuff. Again, there are communities that do tend to get results, or there are communities that are disciplined in the systems, that we'll talk about later on, and you will see that. But yeah, I think it's, it's not unusual. What you're dealing with is not unusual at all. And, you know, the other risk that I'll mention here is political risk of turnover. So why is that a problem? And why do you, and, and we had this discussion in Belmont, and one of the, as we closed up, one of the elected officials who was new said that they, they had not thought about this in this, in this way before, the risk of turnover. Well, the problem with turnover is if it's forced turnover, because you make conflicts or you're a controversial decision that aren't supported by your community, is that often what happens then is you change directions. And if you, and during that change of direction time, you, you've got to start momentum all over again. So things tend to stop, they come to a stop. And so you, that, that one elected official said, well, you know, my view was, if I get, if I don't get re-elected, so what? All that means is I'll have about, about 20 to 40 hours a week more free time. But he said, now I understand that that impacts our community. If, if the result of that is that we stall, and we're unable to progress, that's a no problem, and you do have to consider that. This isn't, you know, this isn't about you, this is about the community, and that's why you're here to begin. You, you, you ran for this thankless job because you wanted to influence the direction of the community, you wanted to get results, right? And so you've got to manage this. And part of this risk is, if you're not getting results in priority areas, you've already heard that, people get frustrated with you, they're gonna say, get somebody else in here. We see that at every level of government. So you've got to do that.
Just, I wanna ask the other members of the town board, Warren, does anybody here not agree with what Mr. Prosser has just said? About establishing goals and priorities and disciplines?
I agree. And I think that then there's one step beyond is communicating that, well, to the, these are the important things we're working on, and this is how sophisticated and advanced of an organization we're trying to create, and a mechanism to carry out, you know, the vision and the vision. And that's, that's an important piece of it, too, that we have to talk about.
Yeah, and, and we'll get to that, because again, this can appear overwhelming, it doesn't need to be. Especially, and it can't be, it's not only it need be, it can't be. I do want people to leave here thinking, wow, this is pretty fundamental stuff. If it, if, if you leave here thinking, this is complicated, I don't quite get it yet, we failed, because it isn't that complicated, it is not easy to do. But there has to be clarity, there has to be absolute clarity in your mind leaving here, with understanding, here's the basic disciplines we need to get in place, all right? Because if you do that, 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 again, that's like performing any task, you can't get that task done successfully and then repeat it, if it's not real clear to you what, what, what motions you have to go through to accomplish the task, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this. All right.
Brendan, I would say, I don't think any that were involved in the last, when we're doing this in April through July timeframe disagreed. I think with any of this stuff, some of it was new. But I think, I'll talk personally. What kind of hit me was the absence of the systems in place to be able to even begin to prioritize what's, I mean, putting the, and so Warren and staff have done a good job of getting some of the foundations done. But now we're getting to the, how do we get to the priority stuff? Or how do we prioritize? But I think that was probably the more reflective part for me that just kind of hit me that, wow, we're missing a lot of systems.
The question I ask is somewhat rhetorical because I've talked to everybody here. And everybody says, maybe slightly differently, but the same thing. So, this is a basic, accepted, fundamental way to do our business, to take care of doing business.
Some of the basic things we've done so far, you know, the reorganizations we've done, taking the budget from a line item level to more of a functional type. This plays right. This is still building the foundation. Once we get these things, these processes in place, then moving forward and tackling the new things will be a lot easier. But like, this is work. You just don't set it up and walk away from it. You have to manage this and do this every day.
Kevin?
Thank you, John. Just a real quick overview of what we did with the survey. We sent it out to staff and to our Board of Commissioners. Each were asked three questions. The commissioners were asked, what are the top three challenges facing Waxaw? What are the top three opportunities? And how would they like to communicate with staff? And then staff members, which I believe was mainly department heads, were asked, what are the challenges, top three challenges facing Waxaw? What outcomes do they hope to have with their department? And what are the barriers to those outcomes? And I'm working off the sheet that was in your pocket. I decided to one more circle on the back, so if you're seeing that. The results from the survey, basically, the Board of Commissioners and staff were on the same page regarding challenges and opportunities. You were asked, what were the three top challenges and opportunities? And we were able to compile a list of six. And we could have had 30 different answers, but thankfully, it seems like you are all on the same page as far as challenges and opportunities. Waxaw is a desirable place to live with a unique character and high quality of life. So, you're already starting with a good product, so to speak, as far as what you're working with. We do have somewhat of a challenge of unrestricted residential growth taking place. And I think there is a realization that some processes and some restrictions may be put into place in order to align this growth with Waxaw's priorities. As far as board communication with staff, this varied greatly from one weekly to monthly updates depending on the project. But there did seem to be an overall understanding that communication needed to come through the manager from staff, which is good. And then as far as the main challenges facing Waxaw, financial capacity, affordability, and needing to diversify funding was one. Transportation, traffic, and aging infrastructure, keeping up with and guiding the town's growth. Having enough qualified staff to expand services. And I think from the conversations today, it sounds like even just to maintain the services you're offering, you could use some additional staff and expertise. Organizational structure and cultural transitioning from a small town to a mid-sized city. And a need to set clear priorities and roles, including for operational services. So, those are the challenges facing Waxaw. As far as some of the opportunities, which I think is interesting that a lot of the challenges kind of line up with opportunities. So, is it a half empty or a half full kind of question there? High quality of life, so people want to live here. Development opportunities, including smart growth features coming your way. Potential for multi-modal transportation. Citizen engagement and innovation, so thinking outside the box on how you engage your citizens. And then opportunity to do some foundational development as an organization. So, you are kind of at a crossroad. Sorry if you can't...
That's okay. Questionnaire takeaways. Number three.
Okay.
Can you maybe explain a little bit more? What is unrestricted residential growth?
It seemed to me, and this is through the survey results as well as some conversations that we've had with staff and with commissioners at this meeting, it seems like there are different organizations that are making new campuses. There also seems to be some development that's taking place that is just, it's happening very quickly. Your experience, population growth, very quickly.
Oh, the rapid part, okay.
Yeah, mainly rapid.
Yeah, okay. Fair, thank you.
And then I think the last one was for the opportunities. We have some new facilities coming onboard, new staff, new services, and new technology. Any more questions on the...
Could I add anything?
Sure.
I'm a positive thinker. When you say challenges and opportunities, opportunity is a problem that can turn into opportunity. So, I almost, they're almost the same statement. So, it's very hard for me to choose those two. Because it's almost the exact same statement to me.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, that's actually where we want to go next is we want to take, have you take more time to receive these results here. What other comments do you have? And I think we're going to heat track these. But one of them is the importance, what I hear you saying, the importance of really looking at how to turn challenges or problems into opportunities.
What comments you made, what you made...
And recognizing. The other part of what I heard you say, and you've said this previously, is one of the real dangers in any organization is not recognizing that potential pitfall or problem ahead of time. Or just, it's bearing your head and saying, of not being alert to problems. Because you can get into this, especially when you're in a stressed situation, and you can get in this mode of saying, of just ignoring those problems and not getting ahead of it. And a good example of that, we've all recognized, at least from what I saw, I shouldn't say all, but I know I've heard from some, concern about the infrastructure. The fact that that infrastructure is being installed and maybe not being upinstalled up to standard, and that is potentially a problem. So, you recommend that. But let's just, me stop talking, I want to just kind of go around the room and hear from each of you. What are your reflections on these takeaways? What are you seeing that you agree with, if you don't agree with, what's missing here? Another way to frame these up, because this is really important for us to understand what are the systems and how do they tie into addressing these concerns? So...
I'll start. I'll go right back to what you had up on the board for a minute. And I think that what's new is a way of critically analyzing what's in front of us. If we have a method to analyze any problem, any opportunity, and it's discipline, we will start something, we will develop it, and we'll finish it. And we'll move on to the next. And that's what I really hope to take out in a couple of days, is to be able to finish a problem off and move to the next.
Brendan, would it be fair to also say that's part of triaging?
Yes.
Triaging problems. Good. That's just the type of discussion we just talk. If you're not ready, we can pass it to the next.
So, to me, you just kind of brought a word in, obviously familiar with me and my whole other career. We deal with what's called life threats. And to me, we're dealing with, we've got coronary heart problems, and we seem to be worried about a broken leg or a stub toe. Let's worry about the main problems, the challenges, the opportunities. And we get to those because those are just kind of wish lists and opportunities for us to do something. But the challenge is, are what's going to kill us? And if we're not addressing the heart problem, then, you know, and it comes down to budgeting one-on-one at that point, again, everybody, I think you heard me say it, we can't be living in the trailer and putting a Ferrari in the driveway. It's not going to work. I mean, there's people that do it, and they love that life. But that's not going to work.
Well stated. Mayor, you have to be the last.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Brendan?
Well, I think, and what I've seen in working, living here for so long is, and being involved with different parts of the town, is the goals that are set, they never come to fruition. And it could be that we're setting too many and trying to do too many at one time. I kind of set a goal and I, a vision, and that leads to a goal. And when you reach that goal, you're finished. Then you start with the next one. I think Waxaw is trying to do too many things at one time. And maybe those too many things have not been really the important things that need to be done. And I'm glad we're moving in the opposite direction now.
That's great.
Good.
As far as challenges, I think I would address it as what makes a typical resident uncomfortable? Number one would be the traffic. As listed here. The other thing would be lack of parks and, I guess, commodities for residents. One thing that's, another challenge I can see is not just that, it's the lack of infrastructure, sewers and water, and just the things that they don't see that they're going to pay for eventually. Opportunities, I mean, to me, it's getting right for us communicating with our residents that what we're doing is another opportunity in communications.
Well, I was going to see if it's okay to see if staff had some, I mean, we had a different couple of...
Let's finish, then if that's okay, let's finish with council.
Okay.
Paul?
Well, I think, we have to go back to the history, back to 2012, with the eight opportunities that they pointed out that they needed done, which there's no way in hell they could ever done it. I mean, it couldn't have been, you could be New York City, you could do eight really good. We also need to look, and I think we're doing it now, is what an old manager told me, is to pull the blinders on. John hit it on it. You know, we had this focus on this Christmas list, but we didn't look at the stuff that we already, we have roads that have never been dedicated to town. They've been used for public roads for 80 years. Never been dedicated to town. So, we don't know what certain, they're still private roads, kind of, because, but we maintain them. And we haven't even identified those yet. So, we got infrastructure problems that are significant. Not only what was done in the last 20 years, but I'm saying back to 1889. We're going back almost that far that there was bugging paths that were built. I know of one road that is on a personal, somebody's property. And we've been maintaining that all the time because nobody did a good survey. So, you know, I think that's where we're at now. We have to identify those goals, but we have to be very tight in this sense of not doing, trying to do everything like Brendan said. That's what we've done before. That's what this 2012 plan was. We're trying to do a million things. We didn't do any of them because we tried to do a million things.
And what Paul said, he just reminded me, when the three of us came onto the board, we had a session with a current board member, and these 36 items were given to us as action plan items. And we looked down through it, and I remember Paul saying specifically, of those 36 items, there were two board members that had their name on 90% of them, 90% roughly. And then Paul's comment was, is, well, looking at these 36 items, less than 10% of them had even been accomplished.
Even started.
Even started. The rest of them were just kind of floundering there. To that point though, I don't believe that it was, if we do this going forward, it's not our names that need to be on these action items. It's his name and assigned staff to do the items. The board does not need to be down in the weeds trying to figure out the 36th action item. That's not our role.
Good. Mayor?
So, kind of keying off your analogy, maybe it's because I'm a baby boomer. I'd love to go into the doctor and only have one thing identified as wrong with me. I think that would be a good...
That would one calorie a day.
I think the realism, just the subtlety of that is probably going to have a couple of things wrong in back to the time thing. And there's some things that we can do to take, you can throw a pill at it versus major heart surgery kind of thing. I mean, I think we have to be realistic for that. On the opportunity side, engage citizens. I think one thing that we're missing is the demographic. We have to come to grips with the fact that the average population here is, I think, in the 36-year-old range. And they have a different set of needs, probably the majority of, that their needs started to come out in the town manager survey, and we need to be cognizant of that going forward as we build those systems. I think on the challenge side, the transportation, aging, infrastructure led me to the system side. We don't have a system for what I'll call government integration. Transportation and infrastructure is something we resolved with the state, with the county, and with us. And how do we go about doing that? That's a system that we probably need to be thinking about, getting to Paul's point. Some of the infrastructure, water and sewer, we engage somebody else. If it's a road, maybe we engage, or maybe we do it alone. Or maybe if we throw some money at the state, they'll help us. That whole thing, we haven't built that system. And the other thing, from a system standpoint, that is probably out there that we need to be aware of that we can't touch right now, is technology is changing the way we do everything. And we have nothing in place to look at technology going forward.
I will go back though to...
You've got glasses now, so you've got two things.
I can see that, I listen to you and see, I can see you close to me. But back to my analogy of the heart thing though, again, the heart thing is going to kill us.
Yeah.
We can throw pills at it all day long, but if we try to scrap or, you know, save money on the heart thing so we can address the toe, it doesn't matter. The toe will get to. We don't need to say, well, we, you know, the heart thing's going to kill us. If we don't address what's going to kill us.
I didn't say not address it.
Right, but I mean, and address it with full force. Not say, well, we've got, well, I went to the doctor and my toe hurts, and this hurts, and my knee hurts. We need to save money for that. We need to address what's going to kill us first and foremost and throw it at it.
Eventually, you may need a bypass, but you can take some pills for the next 10 years.
We've been doing that for the past 20 years. We've taken pills. We're done with pills, according to where we are. I was going to say...
Here's, I don't want to argue that. I'm just saying that...
Here's, I want to, at risk of being an intrusive facilitator, I'm just going to say, here's a wonderful opportunity, a learning opportunity. What I just witnessed is violent agreement, all right? You're, there is general agreement that you got to put first things first. And that's critical. Where it's important to look at the subtle differences. What I heard John saying is, we've really got to focus most of our energies on that. Mayor, what I heard you say is, there may be some other opportunities that don't take us, but you, what John's saying is, well, we have to focus on these areas. Let staff worry about those items. Where are you spending your time? Even now, in these discussions, you need to spend your time on those highly important issues. And you need to be finding a way, getting back to the triage issue, and Paul hit it first. You need to be looking at ways to peel off those other activities and letting this guy figure it out. You hired him because he knows how to do that. He's a problem solver. And he's got a lot of other problem solvers. Let him do that. And we'll talk about in a communication way, in a communication system, how to make sure that that's getting addressed. But if you begin to get...
That's not what I was saying.
But just generally, just generally, no, again, this was violent agreement time. So, what I'm saying is, you wanted to make sure that got done. There's a way to get it done.
Yeah.
So, there isn't that much disagreement about that at all. You just have to practice it and don't burn time.
Yep.
Yep.
You've got to manage your time effectively, so if you can at meetings, and I don't know if this is realistic, I'll get in trouble with Melody here, but you just track how much time you spend on those ministerial duties versus, this was, this was really, this is the time we're going to talk about, and just keep a track record of that, you'll be surprised. If you can start to move that needle to where you're talking about more and more, and I encourage you to measure this because it's so easy, even, even with my staff, I tend to want to get into the details. The more experience you have, the more you want to say, give guidance in that areas. And you don't want your staff to flounder around, but the fact of the matter is, and because you care that things are done right, you're going to want to provide some guidance and discussion on how to do some things. You got to let them make some mistakes, and they won't make as many as you think. In most cases, they're going to maybe do things differently than what you, than the way you do that, that's okay, as long as they get results. If something's really annoying you, you can pick up the phone, but don't spend time at your meetings, that's all I'm suggesting to you. Just find a way, and we'll talk about it, find a way to get those items on his list, don't ignore them, get them on his list, and then he'll find a way to report back to them.
So here's, here's a perfect example of what I was trying to get at. So, a pill, we're, I don't mean this towards you, Wendell, but we're getting the HR policy today. That gets us off, gets us off our plate, and it's totally on them, that's a simple, but it's a policy thing we have to do.
Yes.
Okay, here's, here's the prescription, go.
No, there's going to be...
There's going to be things like that that we can handle.
There's going to be important items that may not be high in your priority list, that if you pay a little bit of attention to it, if you manage your time, just a little attention, it's going to help get systems in place, and we're going to...
Right. That's, that's...
Perfect example, yeah.
Good. More? An example is our, our agendas nowadays, for the last six months, they have been more precise, more defined, more, not micromanaging, because the previous board to us three wanted to micromanage every last little detail, and it was ridiculous. It was to a point of, why did we have a town manager? It's the truth, we drove him crazy, I'm sure, because we tied his hands and didn't let him do anything. He couldn't do anything right, couldn't do anything wrong. And that's really, we need not to get into, like you said, micromanage, and that's a problem when you get to our level, that you love to micromanage.
And you still want to manage risk. I mean, if there's still a highway issue, and you see staff going down one road, and you think there's a big risk, you owe it to a warrant to give them a call and let them know that. Just don't burn a lot of time at a meeting, let them know that, so that he can address it. And you can maybe even raise your hand at the meeting and say, hey, don't do that, just keep this in mind.
I would appreciate that, still, if something along the lines of, yeah, this one's going to get you fired, would be good information.
Here's this basketball...
This is going to get us on national news for bad reasons.
There's this basketball.
Never mind.
That car is still there.
This is a foundation discussion among you, so we got to get this right. Anything else in this area?
You hit it right, though, and again, the three of us, the four of us, and even the six of us, with these two that were in the audience when he was brought on board, understood that we had problems, and we had, we needed to do something. And that's how we justified bringing him on board, because we got all kinds of comments about, you're paying what, you're doing what, and this is how we justified it. So we understand that that's why we brought him on board.
Now, now we just have to get the systems in place and the discipline.
And we understood that, too, that that's why, when we had interviews with him, I know me personally, I, I said, you know, this is what I expect out of you to bring in. Again, we know the mission, you bring the vision. Not that it's, you know, your vision, but it's your way of doing the mission that's laid out in front of us, and that's probably bottom one board.
You're, just what I've heard right now, is you're one of the most self-aware boards that I've seen. You know exactly who you are, and what you are. Now it's, again, a matter of getting the system in place, and what you want to accomplish, that's really important. A lot of times, there isn't that self-awareness, so that's really important. It is important to hear from staff, but before we do that, any comments, any additional thoughts, words concerning what we've talked about?
I almost, this is the, in the ten months I've been here, this is the best conversation that I've opened honest dialogue, and everybody, you know, this, this would be great. I mean, I hope this is, we're turning a page for something, something new, because this is, this is what the way's supposed to work.
And why it's important, it's three reasons. Your job, and, and every, every leader's job, your lead is, is really three things. You do these three things right, you'll get success. Clearly define expectations, so you're defining expectations, we have to refine them a little more, but clearly define expectations. Secondly is resource to get the job done, and that's time, and your time is important to those resources, because they, they cannot get things done if you're not getting direction or support, and that's a resource, in addition to money. It isn't just about money. Sometimes it's your, it's your ability to influence the public or other elected officials or... Third is organizational climate that supports efficient, effective, and responsive service, that's it. And that's the value statement that you're talking about. You do those three, you'll get benefits, if you're clear in that area. So, and it starts with you, then it's got to go to him, and then every one of the departments has to account for it. Clearly define expectations, resources, and organizational climate. All right, so...
Staff?
Yeah. What words you, about what you've heard, what, what, additional support, suggestions, comments, concerns?
I'll say something first. I just, I just said to Dennis as you were talking, aren't you glad you joined us? And he said, yes, obviously, obviously, but it's because he's getting...
No, I'm not.
Run away, run away.
As he rolls his eyes.
Because, he did say yes, because what I said was, you're getting in, at the beginning of a very, a cultural change, a very positive culture change, and that he'll be a part of that as well, and I just think that it's gonna, it does start at the top, and it's definitely going to affect, you know, as it trickles down to us, and I'm, it's a sense of relief to see it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of observations for me, for sure, is the goals piece. If you, if you would have had an opportunity to be, a couple of staff meetings that I've had with my staff, I've said, we're only going to be able to get through about three to maybe five goals maximum within any, within any given year. And, and so I think that's very key on the goal side, because not to get into the weeds, but currently I have eighteen engineering goals and objectives to complete within a year. But in my mind, what's one of the most impactful documents that we have going on right now that will immediately impact the public is the zoning laws, the UDM. And that has very little to do with engineering as a function. You'll hear more about it later this afternoon, but just to give you all a sense of maybe how important that those things are, that those high-level matters are. And the second, you know, we talk, we've talked a lot about infrastructure, and we'll spend the back half of the day talking about it. It's not surprising to me that we'd spend so much time on it, because I think if you were to study maybe the, the history of how cities throughout the country have been built over time, a lot of the core functions of those cities early on during the building phase was about providing infrastructure. And so, you know, I think we can debate a lot of the services that a city or a town could provide, but I think at the core, infrastructure is generally consistent across a lot of US cities in terms of their core functions when they were in the developing stages, and, and generally, they're maintaining infrastructure over time. So it, it's not surprising just from a planning and city building history perspective, so that, those are my two kind of broad observations.
Others?
I add to my observations, too. Back to Dennis's point about goals, I was thinking about goals in a little bit different manner. When we're, when we're working towards goals, I was thinking about the importance of evaluating those goals from the standpoint of, can that goal be achieved now? What is the feasibility that we can actually accomplish this goal? Because if we don't feel like we can, doesn't it need to be a goal at this time? Or, and then taking that a step further, if we have a goal that we need to pursue, if we don't have all resources in place, such as personnel or dollars, are we willing to commit those resources to, to, to meet that goal? So in goal setting, breaking the goals down a little bit further, because to Dennis's point, we, we all have laundry lists of goals, but those goals take various amounts of time and resources to accomplish, and some don't fit neatly within a fiscal year to accomplish. Also, quality of life, I mean, I'm particularly attuned to that phrase in my department, but we all contribute to quality of life, so help, it would be very helpful in decision-making to define what the board sees as, as quality of life, what does that mean? That could be meeting the basic needs, all the way up to those things that we don't all love to have, first-class parks and all those types of things. And so when we, we're defining quality of life, and we're defining those goals, we can kind of look at it as, from the Maslow's hierarchy of needs, so what's the foundation? It's the infrastructure, and it's all those things that we really can't do without to do our other goals. The other thing I was thinking about, too, was synergy. There are projects that aren't neatly contained within a particular department, they, they stand a few different departments and a few different roles in the town. And so synergy is basically getting a large result that's greater than what you put into it. So a greenway would be a great example. I, I think we, we would all, as the staff, everybody, it would be a great place to consider looking at things from a synergistic point of view. A greenway, for example, you know, we have a lot of goals, we have a goal of attracting millennials, we have a goal of improving transportation, we have goals of bringing people in to explore Waxahachie, and want to, want to maybe consider living here at some point. And then quality of life, and then greenway, for example, hits all of those, all of those areas. So when we look at all those things that we think we need to do, what are the synergies and efficiencies that we can create to get to those, to those overarching goals that you're setting for us? And the last thing that I would offer is standardization. It's very helpful to know what the expectations are. If we're bringing initiatives to you, what is the information you would like staff to bring to you so that you can make well-rounded decisions? And the clearer that we can be on those things, the better prepared we can be to, to give you great recommendations.
Others?
Chief?
Good.
All the challenges, infrastructure's going to be a big topic. I mean, if we don't get it built from the bottom up right, what's on top is just going to fall in the hole. We've seen it, Warren's seen it, Dennis has seen it, over and over. That's going to be a big challenge. Town hall, public service department, that's, and it all boils down to money. It's going to take a lot, and if we don't get the infrastructure right, it's going to take way more money. I mean, two pieces of pipe to replace thirty thousand dollars, that's crazy. If we don't get it right, it's going to, it'll cost the town a lot of money. I've been here fourteen years, and this is the first time that I've ever seen the board and the staff working this close on something and this hard at it. I mean, this is great. Fourteen years, I think a lot, just get pushed aside, and this is awesome here. That's it.
IT?
IT is our, our own separate, where we think technical, to us, all of this is kind of foreign, so although I'm sure it's necessary, I wouldn't have any of the pieces of paper on the wall, I would just have one piece of paper, and it would say our top three goals, and on Monday, who's getting those assignments? I wouldn't have three adjectives to describe, policy, assessment, affirmations, nation, state, Charlotte, over there you got success, whatever, all those things, I don't really understand them, I'm sure they're needed, and I think this is probably great to define them, but back to what Brenda said, and what John said, what are our three heart attacks? On Monday, what's going to happen with them?
And what I hear you saying, and I've heard this from others, is that clarity, moving forward, clarity is, is going to be kind of premium. There's a lot of complexity with what you're doing, and because of the complexity, you need more clarity. You just can't get bogged down in the complexity, and that's what's happened in the past. You deal with complex systems and operations, and you lose clarity as a result of that.
And I think Nick, Nick brings up a good point. Oftentimes, we don't, we as a board don't take it down to the level of where can technology, or can, ask the question, can you bring back information that says where, if at all, technology can help us? Paul mentioned, we were starting to streamline the agendas. You came up with, working with Melody, this is the synergy part, a great solution in iCompass, it took a while to get that going, it took a while to get us on iPads, and look where we've gotten to. But we had to get better as an organization to figure out how to get that clarity.
Rick, along with what Nick said, just, and from a broader perspective, that's why I like staff in the, I mean, if you haven't been exposed to this sort of thing, it's important that you be exposed, to be a part of the conversation, and that, that is part of building the organizational culture that I think we want. I mean, the board doesn't have all the answers, I don't have all the answers, staff doesn't have all the answers, but together we can figure out what the best answers are. And obviously, at the end of the day, the board decides, but you have to have all the information, the best information that I can get to you in front of you so you can make a good decision.
It's about break time, and let's take any other final comments, and then we'll come back to some systems. And...
I'll keep my directions.
Anybody else?
Whether we like it or not, we are one big team.
Absolutely.
None, none of us are more important than the other one. You're all very important. We need all that information gathered to one point to make these decisions, because we are making decisions that will affect thousands of people, thousands of people, not only in our community, in the United States.
And for future generations. What you do now, what you do today, what you do in the next year will impact the cost of services and the quality of life, and for, for generations to come. And you know that, we see that, communities that do things right fundamentally, they, they leave a legacy, and that legacy makes a, makes a big difference in how people live in the future. So, one final thought, and then we'll, we have a break, and then we're going to come back and talk about some of the systems. The final thought is, and this is, this is a little bit, well, this is a lot staggering, but I want you to think about it. The real challenge with, with cities, towns, with local governments, is your success is pretty, pretty much defined by lack of failures. It is literally and figuratively. People judge you by how, whether systems don't fail. So much of your systems are literally and figuratively underground, you're defined by your failures, really. And if you don't have many failures, people look at you and see success. But it's when you fail that you get defined. And you see that in, certainly, infrastructure systems, we see it in Flint, Michigan, but we see it in systems where there's other problems with street failures that cause increased costs, or planning snafus that cause problems, or in police departments. I mean, the, all of this, it's, it's when something goes wrong that gets your attention. Very rarely do you get, do you get comments and accolades for what you've done right. It's typically, what you hear about is what goes wrong, so we're like an officiating crew. Nobody wants to hear us, see us. Keep that in mind, because that's part of this fundamental of what you're, of what you're looking at. It's really making sure that you don't fail, and that's tough, that's really tough. So we'll take a break, and then we'll come to some other questions. When do you get back?
About just a little after ten, I work a...
About just, well, after ten, I work.
Yeah. Let's five to, so we can say five after.
All right. Steve's having a thought on four after.
Okay.